Alright, so we started at 6:31. As Chair of the North Hampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 202004, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting, and all members of the North Hampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: and webinar ID 95030545769, or by clicking the following website address: B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing this meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of necessary information for accessing this meeting, including how to access by using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the SAU website at www.sau21.org. C) Providing mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 781-534-3581, or email mferara@SAU21.org. D) Adjouring the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. If in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Bear with me, I gotta scroll. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done so by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. We will now take roll call vote.
Martin Savician.
Present with family.
Armina Peterson.
Present alone.
Tom Von Jess.
Present alone.
Danielle Strater.
Present alone.
And Brian Belanger is not present. Roll call is complete.
Okay. Bear with me one second. I have to... Give me one second, I'm having a slight technical difficulty. I closed my board docs. Here we go, got it back. So, before we start the meeting, I'd like to open a public hearing on the proposed withdrawal of the Building Maintenance Fund, Building Maintenance Fidelity Trust for costs related to irrigation, Homeland Security, and safety systems. So, we properly posted this meeting. Legal notice was done on April 23rd, and it was in the Hampton Union for seven days. We're proposing withdrawal from the Maintenance Fidelity Trust Fund for safety and security reasons. The first is security cameras, recommended by Homeland Security, and the amount of $4,800. The second is fencing, in the amount of $5,532, also a security recommendation. A repeater system for two-way radios, in the amount of $7,852. Again, security, Homeland Security recommendation. Musical instrument shelving, in the amount of $6,643. This is a recommendation from the North Hampton Fire Department, because the current storage is a fire hazard. And then last, $2,330 for irrigation system repairs. I just want to comment that all of these would have normally gone through the long-term maintenance warrant article, but last year we proposed not to put in the warrant article due to the pandemic and because of cost pressures. So, we're looking to use the Building Maintenance Trust. The Buildings Maintenance Trust has a target balance of $150,000. We currently have $169,635 in the trust, and we're proposing to withdraw a total of $27,157,000 from the North Hampton Building Maintenance Fidelity Trust for these items. With that, I'd like to open up to any public comment.
We have 13 attendees. If you would like to comment, please use the Zoom function to raise your hand. I don't see anything.
Okay, thank you. And we will get to the school board meeting then. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from April 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 1st, 2021 meeting.
Thank you, Armina. Do we have a second? Thank you, Martin. Any comments, corrections? Alright, hey Brian. Moving on to correspondence accommodations. The correspondence accommodations. Yes, Susan.
So, two things from our end. First of all, the week before the vacation was Professionals Day, so we invited in our office staff at North Hampton School, Mary Beth and Sue and Kelly, they're just a wonderful support for us. So, we did our best to recognize them. And this week, May 3rd to May 7th, is Teacher Appreciation Week. So, we just wanted to express our extreme gratitude for the teachers and staff at North Hampton School. They've just done amazing work this year, as they do every year. And I just wanted to share a couple of things that have happened in celebration of their work. Some of them are sponsored by our parent organization, PAL. So, PAL has sponsored a raffle that's taken place with drawings each day this week, gift cards for teachers, so there's three winners every day. We had a coffee truck on Tuesday, and we had donuts this morning. And tomorrow, they have a parade, like a drive-through parade planned for the teachers, so the teachers will stand outside, kind of like we did at the end of last year, and parents will drive through to express their appreciation. And then administrators and office staff hosted a luncheon yesterday for our teachers. So, we just wanted to share how proud we are of them. And we also had put together a video. We asked children to tell us what they appreciated about their teachers. And it wasn't something we shared completely publicly, because it was really just meant for the teachers. But Becca has, I think, just two that we have permission to share tonight, two students who had shared something really fun about their teachers. Do you want to share that right now, Becca?
Sure, I'll go ahead and share my screen real quick, and then we can share.
Becca, you might have to unmute yourself.
I couldn't like have everything open. I missed, Carly is like my Rhonda, so I'm having to fiddle through on my own. Okay, now I'm unmuted. Let me try that again. Get it set up again, and then I'll start sharing again. So, tell me about your teacher.
Well, Ms. Ivy is very nice, and she likes to teach us this stuff. And a lot of that stuff is super cool. And like she put together a whole thing for us with poetry, so it's really cool.
Alright, then. Oops. What does Mr. Saliga like to wear?
Mr. Saliga's favorite type of clothes are usually consist of SpongeBob socks, Patrick Star socks, and many cartoonish socks.
And does that help him be a better teacher?
It improves my academics a ton, and I think the whole journey of it is just much better.
That's great. That's a really special project, and I'm sure it meant a lot, both for the teachers, but also for the students to have that opportunity. That's a cool idea.
I mean, if you'd like, we could share it privately, but it's 20 minutes long, so it's really funny.
That's awesome. Hey, speaking of students saying it better, we're going to continue on with correspondence accommodations in a second, but I want to just acknowledge with the group that when I was having my technical difficulties, I opened the public hearing and opened comments for the public hearing on the trust funds, but I skipped over public comments in general. So, if there's no problem with the group after we finish correspondence accommodations, before Kayla talks, if anyone in the audience has any other comments, I'd like to allow for those. Is that okay? Alright. Any other correspondence accommodations? I'd like to thank, there's been a lot of work going on, and we're going to hear about it, I think, from Dr. Hobson in a little while. But there's been a lot of work going on with some consultants looking for superintendent, and that work has been a big investment of time. Some of these interviews went on five hours. There were multiple candidates that were interviewed, there was a lot of prep work. There were teachers and administrators and parents from across all of our communities. But David and Matt, I'd like to thank you for your work and your contributions on that team. That was a big undertaking, and I really appreciate it. And then, Dr. Kelly, I continue to appreciate the work that you are doing for us as interim superintendent, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Unbelievable, very good. Okay, having said that, if there's no additional correspondence accommodations, I'd like to go back and open it up for public comment. If anyone in the audience has any comments other than on the trust fund withdrawal. Alright, no raised hands. Kayla, the moment we all wait for every month.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I hope that you all had a lovely spring break. This month, I have several exciting things to announce, including a fun surprise for the eighth graders that I'm very excited to share with you. First of all, eighth grade students started preparing a play called "Once Upon a Crime." Mrs. Chavez is directing it, and it will be filmed and shared with the school community. I'm very excited to participate in it and to spend extra time outside with my friends. Also, seventh and eighth graders had the choice to participate in a program called BioMade. BioMade is a company that creates body parts, foods, plants, and many other things by growing cells and using industrial biotechnology. Each student that wanted to participate chose a topic and is working with a mentor from outside of North Hampton School to do research. For example, I am looking into how BioMade and growing skin cells can change robotic limbs and prosthetics for the better. I am extremely grateful to Mrs. Jones and NHS Administration for enabling students to participate in these worthy projects. In addition, seventh and eighth graders worked on writing nature notes. A nature note can be any length and is a written report compiled of someone's observations. NHS students went outside during their science classes to observe the organisms and plants living in the woods next to the nature trail. Then, students wrote up reports on their laptops about what they saw, and some of us chose to submit those reports to the Gulf of Maine Research Institute Journal. The institute's website allows students across the country to submit their nature notes anonymously. These reports are then reviewed by other students, and if they are given good reviews, they could be published on the online public journal. This is a really cool way for students to share their hard work and whatever cool things that they find. My class found scum cabbage, a plant that releases toxins into the air to keep animals from eating it. Salamanders, chipmunks, pill bugs, and a pair of bright blue sunglasses that ended up becoming our class mascot. They're still in the classroom today. We had lots of fun on the nature trail, and I understand now why students enjoy outdoor learning so much. Next, student government organized an Earth Day event the Thursday before spring break. Flyers were sent out to the school community that asked students to pick up trash around their homes, and then to send in pictures of their trash collections. The whole school did a great job cleaning up our town, but elementary students did especially well, and some had huge piles of trash that they had picked up off their streets. Student government members are currently working on putting together a slideshow of all of the pictures that we received. As soon as the slideshow is completed, it will be shown to the school. I want to thank everyone who participated in our school trash cleanup during Earth Day, because you were able to make our town a better place. If you were not able to pick up trash on Earth Day, it is never too late to pick up a piece of trash on the side of the road or in front of your house. Also, here's the surprise. Student government is planning a semi-formal dance for eighth grade students that will be taking place on June 4th. Eighth graders will be outside on the basketball court with their mask on, so that everyone can dance and have fun safely. More details, including the theme of the dance and the rain date, will be released to the school in a week or two. This has been a very exciting month, and I'm looking forward to all of the projects and activities that will be taking place in the last part of this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Great job. Again. That is some exciting stuff coming up. How did the idea of the dance come about? Was that a student council idea, or what happened there? That's great.
So, student government was looking to actually plan a father-daughter dance, but due to the fact that we want to make it super inclusive and we want to be able to include everyone, we decided that it'd be better to have a school dance. And it was actually, the idea originally came from Snyder and Mrs. Carlson, who brought the idea to student government, and then we were really excited about it. So, we started planning for it. So, thank you both so much.
That's great. That's a great use of the basketball court, too. Any questions for Kayla? Or Kayla, do you have any questions for us? And I'm not going to use Mr. Duffy's joke about staying around for the finances, but you're welcome to, alright? Thank you for joining, and we're going to see you again next month. Get an update on how this month has gone, on May?
Definitely. Thank you all so much. Have a nice night.
Thank you, too. Alright, now, next we have a competency-based education presentation.
If we could, Andre and Erin coming in, perfect. And I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen, because I'll be running the PowerPoint as the three of us present. See if I can do a better job this time.
You did a fine job last time, Becca.
That's very kind of you.
So, while Becca's, just for those who don't know, while Becca's getting set up, Erin Ivey is a second grade teacher, and Andre Garner is our grade seven and eight ELA teacher. And they've graciously volunteered to come share some work with us, or with you.
I just have a little circle that's saying I'm going to be sharing my screen, but I don't think it's sharing yet. It's like this.
It says it started from our view, so...
Can you see it, though?
It just says Becca Carlson has started screen sharing, so I'm guessing it's coming.
Maybe try to turn it off and back on.
Alright, yeah, let me stop sharing and try to share again. Well, I don't know why it's not like that. I don't have a lot of tabs open or anything like that. Miss Snyder, do you want to try and share your screen? I can still talk through, but that way at least we'll have the visual up.
Yeah, I just tried to pull it up now. I do have a lot of tabs open, so just give me a second, because...
I'm going to keep trying to load it. I'm going to keep trying to share my screen. So, when you're ready, let me know, and I'll stop my efforts here with my endless circle. Sorry about this, guys, I'm not quite sure. My lifeline is sending me suggestions, but they're not working.
Okay, let's see. Do you want me to try?
Yep, so let me stop sharing, and we'll give you a go.
Somebody's got to make me a co-host, though. Oh no, I got it. Never mind, I got it. Nope, no, it's disabled. I need to be a co-host.
Hey, as we're squirreling this away, I want to go back once again. We've made a couple of faux pas tonight, so I appreciate everyone's patience. Becca, I want to thank you for your work on the search community as well. That was a... I'm sorry about that, but thank you.
No, of course.
So, Matt, can you make me a co-host?
I think Caroline just did.
I changed the settings, so you should be able to share.
There you go. Look at those tabs.
No, don't, 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 don't.
Some people keep them open, and some people keep them closed.
Susan, do you want to make it so that it's present, so the notes aren't there underneath, and it's a little bit bigger?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Okay, sorry.
Hang on. Whoopsie. What's that? There we go.
No, perfect.
How's that?
Good, good, good. Alright, so let's go ahead and get started. So, good evening. I am here today with second grade teacher Erin Ivey and seventh and eighth grade ELA teacher Andrew Garner to share with you a bit about Poetry Month and to provide some information about our competency-based education journey here at North Hampton School. Next slide, please. So, North Hampton School loved Poetry Month this year. We really got into it. We celebrated each day with a poetry reading from our library assistant, Ms. Joyce Seymour, during the daily announcements. She shared works by poets such as Shel Silverstein, Jack Politzky, and Ogden Nash, who I believe is actually buried right here in North Hampton. Some other examples of participation around the school included fourth grade studying a wide variety of poetry forms, writing their own original works, and participating in a poetry slam. It's worth noting that author and poet Sharon Creach was a class favorite. Reading interventionist Ms. Amanda Wernicki fostered her students' love of reading with the Random House Book of Poetry for Children. They laughed a lot over this collection of classics. And we'll be sharing more about second, seventh, and eighth grade poetry in just a moment. Next slide. As a refresher for our experienced board members and an introduction to our status for our new members, we're well on our way in our journey to competency-based education at North Hampton School. Coming from a standards-based curriculum and project-based learning, the shift to CBE has been a positive and natural one for North Hampton School. Some highlights from the past few years. Our work with our colleagues across SAU21 provided us with the competencies and power standards seen in our curriculum documents and on our report card, that's Design Principle 7. Our response to intervention model has continued to evolve and is providing both ELA and mass support K-5, so that touches on Design Principle 3. And this year, we're focusing on competency and habits of learning rubrics to provide relevant and actionable evidence of learning for our students, so those are Design Principles 2 and 7. So, throughout most of the school year, our ELA competencies are within the context of the Opinion, Informational, and Narrative Units. In April, however, the team takes advantage of National Poetry Month to provide students with the opportunity to transfer their knowledge and skills to this unique format of the written word. Here are examples of two competencies that students applied in last month's poetry unit. So, you'll note the structure of our umbrella competencies with the related power standards articulated underneath. Teachers plan lessons and provide feedback and gather evidence of learning on the power standards, which then in turn inform the umbrella competencies. So, now I'm going to hand the reins over to Ms. Erin Ivey, and she's going to share a little bit about what happened in second grade. And Ms. Snyder, at the end, the link for this is that poetry in second grade, the title there is the link that actually connects to the YouTube video for the students.
Hey, everyone. So, in second grade, we learned the ingredients that make a good poem and how to see the world through a poet's eyes. We learned that poets see the world with fresh new eyes, and we talked about how scientists might describe the same object. And we compared how the poet would describe the same object. We used some great collections of poems. Becca has put a few pictures of the covers on this slide. Some were Red Sings from Tree Top, Urine Colors, Creatures of Earth, Sea and Sky, Old Elm Speaks, and Song of the Water Boatman and other poem. And we use these resources and author texts to understand how poets look at nature, seasons, and holidays with fresh new eyes. We experimented with line breaks and eliminating words to add rhythm and music to our poetry. And we worked with many types of poems, including urgent poems, talk-to poems, and straight-from-the-heart poetry. So, we have a few videos of students from our classes sharing their poems.
Okay, so Becca, how do I get out of here?
Um, yeah, I would escape. And then you should be able to get back to your other, yeah, the other tabs. You can close that one, and then just go back to the presentation. Thank you very much, Ms. Ivy, for sharing what second grade did with that unit. I really appreciate it. Alright, so now I'm going on to seventh and eighth grade. So, you can see here that the wording of the language competency that you see there on the right is the same as that that we used in the second grade, but that the power standards that inform that competency are significantly more advanced. This is a nice example of the through line that's seen in many of our K-8 competencies for students' learning progressions. And on the left, you can see the reading literature competency. While these power standards are most often applied to the context of novels and short stories, students can apply the skills of analyzing central ideas, interpreting literary devices, and citing evidence from the text to poetry as well. So, on the next slide, I'm now going to hand things over to Mr. Garner to share some of what happened in seventh and eighth grade with our poetry unit.
Alright. So, thanks for having me, everybody. Introducing this poetry unit is pretty cool, because as Kayla had said... Introducing this poetry unit is pretty cool because, as Kayla had said, we were really able to use the outdoor spaces, and I think the kids really looked forward to getting outside. Using the field, we went in the rock garden quite a bit, and it was really neat because we were able to work with the nature, the nature element to write our poems. So our main focus was looking at interpreting and using literary devices, most specifically figurative language. And our unit began by reading quite a few exemplary poems that focused on nature and the use of figurative language. So some of the poets that we read were Maya Angelou and Langston Hughes, Robert Frost, William Shakespeare, and William Wordsworth. And as we read and discussed the poems, the students explored their outdoor spaces, both at home, school, and around their community to find inspiration for writing their own poems. So the key was that the students used the information that they learned in the beginning of the unit to create their own poetry, where they were given the opportunity to show their mastery of the concepts learned throughout the unit. The really good thing that you'll be able to see is that I teach both seventh and eighth grade, which gives me the unique opportunity to, you know, build upon what we did as seventh graders. And you'll be able to see kind of the complexity and how it grows. So the seventh graders wrote a portfolio of poems. It was written with more of a structured template, kind of like a recipe, and each poem focused on one element, specifically a figurative language, in order to show their understanding. Whereas the eighth graders were asked to complete a parallel assignment, but they were given much more freedom with their poetic structure. And they were asked to refer to the previous seventh grade unit for some of the elements, you know, simile, metaphor, rhythm, rhyme, and so on. So they were expected to kind of expand upon that. And the eighth grader is really focused on imagery and symbolic nature. So the poems that you will see, the two seventh grade poets, we have Rachel Dion, who did a really good job of showing the personification of a tree. Julie Allen, a great poem focusing on the beach, which used sensory imagery and simile. And an excerpt from eighth grader Moses Ruhong's poem, you'll see he focuses attention in the rock garden behind our school, where he uses metaphor, symbolism, and imagery, and more of a free verse poem to discuss just one of the majestic boulders that we have on the property. So you're ready for the videos.
Her leaves blow around in the wind, falling ever so calmly, brushing up against the ground. She stands tall, looking at my children, running and playing. She cannot run, she cannot play. All that she must do is stand tall and strong. The wind howls like a wolf under the full moonlight. He blows against her, shaking her leaves off. The children see them and run to the tree. They climb her and feel the strong wind blow against them. The waves are blue like the sky, they're as big as dune armies. The sand is brown as dirt, there's so much we cover the earth. The sand is grainy like salt. The sand is just like the tins from weed. The waves wave just like from an earthquake. Waves are blue and wavy like the movement in someone's hair.
Residing upon the outskirts of the district, license-included garden rocks, cultivation of dampened dirt, air trees, and frostbitten stone benefits complexity that cannot be easily elucidated. It's secular art, man. The slight and deceased atmosphere followed by a intermittent circle of fowls. Comprehension of the landscape creates an asphyxiation, an asphyxiation of awe and absent congruence, uniquely between the trees, the rocks, and the shrubbery, all coherently complements each other, turning your empty canvas.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Garner, for sharing what your students did. I really appreciate it. So now questions or comments from anyone on the on the board for myself or the teachers?
I'll start off. I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, and this is, I'm really impressed. First of all, thank you for making the ties between competency-based education, showing the Poetry Month, and then how you leapt off from that. And then the students' work is amazing. You all could have just had the students presenting class. And the fact that you actually took it that next step to have them use technology and the green screen and the videos and, you know, coming up with the right images to present really just took it to that next level, and it really shows how you're leveraging all of the tools you have in the school. So thank you for that.
That was our new padcaster in action. It's very cool, like a little mobile studio. We love it.
Yeah, so it's one thing to have something, right? It's another thing to use it. And the fact that you're all jumping in and the students are jumping in and you're making a part of your your day to day is wonderful. So that's that's fantastic. It's great to see.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you very much. Great work, and it's great to see the competency-based education and kind of the how you're how you're developing curriculum around it and then the rubrics and how it's all tied together. I've I've learned a lot over the last couple of years, and it's appreciated to see the progress. Okay. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thanks, Erin and Andre.
A good night, everybody.
Thank you. That was cool.
All right.
So moving on to continuing business, then, the trimester three update. Susan, I think that's you.
Yep. So much of it's in the written report, but honestly, just a few things. The first, I think, is in kind of in the numbers, which is also in the written report. So at this point, as of Monday, the 10th, we will only have one remote group left in middle school. So we'll have all of our sixth graders and all of our seventh graders in person, and we'll we'll be maintaining a remote eighth grade group. We also have Pat Yeton's back, and so that means that all of our phys ed classes can take place outside. So no more zooms for phys ed, which is really, really great. We did our best to get kids out as much as we could. To start with, this this increases our ability to provide phys ed classes that are outdoors and really engaging. And also in line with that, the spring sports have started, and so that's been highly successful. Many thanks to Pat Guidi for all of the organization, and we've been able to have the kids start right after dismissal. And they just seem really happy. So we've got we've got cross-country track and field, a new cycling club, softball, and baseball.
Very cool.
Those are the updates.
Thank you. And then, Dr. Hobbs, would you like to give a superintendent search update?
Well, sure. First of all, I have to acknowledge Mr. Von Jess. You put in the hours as well on the search committee. So thank you for your participation. But I'm proud to announce that, well, we were all there last night, but the joint board has nominated Meredith NATO as superintendent of schools and given the joint board chair the ability to start negotiating contracts. So that should be wrapped up in the near future.
Good news. I'll just a comment that we had a very, very strong candidate pool. Felt very fortunate to have as many great candidates to consider as we did. And, you know, it was a lot of thought and deliberation, and I think I'm excited to see what the future holds. I'll just say that. We got a great leader. Any other comments or? All right, moving on, written reports. Dr. Eric Kelly, superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I'll just highlight a few pieces of my report. It's attached there for your perusal. First, an important note about fully vaccinated adults. So we have had some questions regarding, you know, now that we've all had access to the vaccine, and it has been two weeks past the second dose for our SAU 21 employees. What kind of changes does this mean for us? Well, it doesn't mean that there are changes to our safety protocols. We are adhering to six-foot distancing, wearing masks, staying in cohorts, minimizing transitions. All of these pieces need to stay in place. We have a commitment to our to our teachers and to our students who have not yet had access to the vaccine. So that's a piece that's important and that all of our students are in buildings five days per week. Next, speaking of the vaccine, this is not as pertinent to Northampton, but the Winnicott students aged 16 and 17 are participating in a vaccine closed pod. First dose is this Friday, and second dose is May 28. But there is breaking news. We just found out that that the Seacoast Public Health Network will hold a clinic for students age 12 to 15. I will be informing families and sending out a survey to determine the the level of interest. Who would like to participate in that? It will be held at Winnicott High School. The first dose will be May 16th. It's a Wednesday afternoon after school. And then the second dose will be June 18th, a Friday after school is out. So of course, that is optional. Of course, that is something that's that's offered. Certainly, you know, families need to make their own personal decisions. But we felt it was helpful and important for us to offer that because the Seacoast Public Health Network is is willing and able and very glad to offer that to our students. So I do think it will increase the accessibility to vaccines for many of our students. So more information to come on that tomorrow. And then just finally, I wanted to point out, sometimes these things go under the radar. We had a fantastic professional development session hosted by our Seacoast, by Winnicott. So our Seacoast homeless liaisons. It was supposed to be a regional event. However, it was attended by liaisons from all over the state. That was on April 9th, so it was incredibly successful. And they are currently planning the session that is technically the statewide event for May 21st, a virtual event, and there'll be fantastic guest speakers at that one as well. So lots of great things going on behind the scenes with all of our staff. And that's it for my report. Thank you.
It's really great. Hey, one quick comment. It seems like all of the second shots that you just mentioned are landing on Fridays. So if that was planned, and I imagine it was, that's smart, and thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. It was tricky because we have a lot of end-of-year events happening in the first and second week of June. So we had to plan it really carefully so, you know, students could just have a weekend, a free weekend after the second dose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, Dr. Hobbs, the assistant superintendent report.
Sure, thank you. Obviously, the written reports in your packet. We've already covered the superintendent search. The next topic is statewide assessments. It's the assessment season this spring. We will be administering New Hampshire statewide assessments in grades three through eight for ELA and math. And then our benchmark years for science are grades five, eight, and 11. You'll see that the window was really from March until June. But obviously, a lot of schools wanted to make sure that they got instructional time in before the the real testing occurred. So you're going to start seeing that testing schedule pop up across the SAU and in Northampton specifically. Just a quick note on these. They 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 are an online test, but they do need to be taken in person. So we're working with any students in the Remote Learning Academy or any remote students that want to come in and take the test, that we can make sure that we can accommodate that. Or they're they're free to opt out if they don't feel comfortable coming into the school. So that will be part of our world for the next few weeks. Second is competency-based education presentations, as we saw from the phenomenal presentation from Erin and Andre and Becca. We plan on continuing these throughout this spring and over the summer and into next year. I think from on a personal note, first of all, I'm very appreciative of the the classroom impact that this has. I think we're going to see more and more the parent impact that it has as well. I plan on getting a little bit more technical. We can show parents and school board members what we can show on Power School and how we can click through that that information for for our students and how we can present it in a way that's meaningful. So I'm excited to start start working on that and start showing you guys what we can do there. And then last is a celebration, I suppose. We have, we're in a position where we've recommended all of our teachers in SAU 21 for renewals of their certification. So they have to go in, they do have to pay, but we have recommended them. We're in a position where they've done their PD. So so we made it again for this year, and we're kosher for next year. And that's it. You guys have questions?
Thank you, David.
All right, thanks.
Susan, principal's report.
Yes, so the first thing in the principal's report has to do with the Leadership Council work that we did last month. And we were happy to welcome Brian to Leadership Council. And we spent most of the time, oh, actually, we kind of had a laundry list of things, but much of the time was spent discussing scheduling for next year. So we're hard at work trying to make sure that we have a functional schedule for full school days for the next school year. And last year, during this time, it's so funny because, you know, you think you know what's coming. And literally last spring, we thought we might have a regular school year starting in September. And we had a committee that got together and made a list of priorities in making those and what we wanted to. And and, you know, how we wanted to schedule instructional blocks and UA time and lunches and all of those kinds of things. And that committee created a schedule that we never used because of the pandemic. So we brought that schedule back to the Leadership Council for feedback and got some feedback and have been working to make some adjustments. And each member of Leadership Council took it back to their team for feedback. So that that feedback loop has been working really well with our Leadership Council, where we present. We, you know, might make a presentation and then get their feedback, and then they get feedback from all of the staff. And then we just kind of keep refining. So that we feel like we're in a pretty good place as far as that goes. We also had a virtual parent information night for incoming kindergarten parents on April 20th. So I probably should have also given kudos to our kindergarten teachers that that came and presented there. So Sarah Benson, who's just had a baby, came back virtually for the parent information night in Ellen Pond Grace. And so we had a nice presentation. We had a group of about 20 parents and believe that we've answered their questions and have proposed a schedule for kindergarten to start in the fall with kindergarten screening, the first two days of school, and then short days for a bit and the first full day of kindergarten, starting September 13th. So those are the those are the things that I wanted to mention. And then we are doing, we are in the midst of planning for extended school year services in the summer and then pass it off to Aita and let her describe the ESY plans.
Yes, thank you, Susan. So we started off by surveying our staff to see who's available for as teachers and also EAs for ESY. And we had a, we have a really great pool of teachers and EAs that are available and willing to support our students. And then we've surveyed our parents that of students that are eligible for ESY. And we asked them if they prefer in-person, remote, or either. And so we do have a small pool of remote students. So in the next few weeks, I will be meeting with our grade level groups to discuss what the in-person ESY would look like and then discuss how we can support some of the remote learners for the summer. We also have one of our contracted providers providing reading services as she had prior, as prior to. So that's going to allow us for some flexibility with reading services as well. We are also planning during our ESY intervention, reading intervention services as well for our select, our selected tier-two population as well during during that time. Our ESY program will run Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for the month of July, starting July 6, and our times will be nine to noon.
Thank you. Hey, quick, quick question, Aisha. Do we anticipate kind of a larger cohort in ESY this year? Or is it kind of? kind of a larger cohort in ESY this year or is it kind of the same as as every year from eligibility standpoint?
Um. I I would have to research that because I did not, I don't know what our number population was prior to my arrival. But we are able to offer a preschool program for ESY rather than just related services. So I think that's going to, that's definitely an will be an increase from my understanding. But we definitely, I think we have a nice cohort of of kiddos within each grade.
And then it's totally fair that you need to do some research on the, the reason I was asking is because from a, from a budgeting standpoint, if we need to consider any increase in the in the budget to make sure that we're taking care of those students and it's a spike, we should just keep that on the radar as well.
Absolutely.
Certainly, an important investment.
So Tom, we actually received a second installment of CARES SIR grant money. So we're planning to use some of that CARES SIR grant money to pay for the tier two intervention services so that that won't come out of the special education budget. Right. Not if that cares us or grant.
That's great. That that's great. And thank you for sharing that. And we we would need to make sure we got it done either way, but that's a, that's a great solution, right?
Yep. So that's it. Questions, comments?
A quick question on the on the chart here that I'm looking at. Is this eligible students or are these the ones that are going?
The enrollment chart that's on the written report?
Yeah.
No, that's total enrollment in the school.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not ESY. That's just our, I I always put enrollment numbers every month. That's just our enrollment.
Enrollment, okay.
And then one, one last question, twenties twenty parents coming to the kindergarten kind of night is is great. I mean, it's it's been hard to kind of get the word out in the past. Did did you all do anything different this year to kind of communicate what was going on? Because I know in the past it was been, you know, word of mouth or or parents that had students in school already, but sometimes there'd be new folks in town that didn't know about it. I'd have, I mean, that twenty is fantastic. I'm just wondering if there was any new kind of communication plan that you used to draw that many folks in.
So I I think I would give that credit to Kelly Ford in the office because registration has been going really well. And since we changed to kind of full online registration, it's just made it easier for parents. They've been able to submit forms electronically and, you know, scan and send birth certificates and things like that. So so she had an email list generated of all of the, all of the enrollments for kindergarten and we were able to email them directly rather than just posting. And so I think that probably made a really big difference and you know, some years you have to wait until all of their information gets put into Power School in order to be able to email them. But because of the way enrollments worked, I would credit, I would credit Kelly with this.
That's great. That's great news. And it's great to see, you know, the the a strong kindergarten class. That's wonderful. Good stuff. Alright, any, any other questions? Alright. Then Matt, the finance report.
I think Brian had his hand up.
Oh, I apologize, Brian. I'm super sorry.
Sorry.
No, no, it's good.
No, you had hit it a little bit about tier, tier two. Has nationally, there's a conversation about social emotional and about learning loss. Has there been any conversations with classroom teachers thinking about not just academics, but thinking about what can we do over the summer to reacclimate students who may not, you know, not need the typical ESY experience with regards to social emotional or any other supports that we might feel to offer beyond just the tier academics, the tier two, tier three academics. Is there any conversation with classroom teachers about students that might be you know, benefit from some sort of summer camp or some sort of other engagement activity?
So there are we we do have a kind of a limited fund, but I think all of our teachers are aware of it for to to support families that might need support for summer camps. And we also work pretty closely with Joe Manzi at the rec department because they run their summer program at the school and they'll be using the school site again this summer. So we try to partner with with Joe because I think the rec department really fills that need pretty well each year. And then there are, you know, kind of as you're indicating, I think that the there are a few conversations that our school counselor, Vaz Consales, has been involved in with students who really are exhibiting signs of of needing emotional support and and specific services or specific opportunities. And so I think that that Vaz has been really great with with helping to pair families with some support. And then the rec department's been been really great. And we have, we do have some funds that we've been able to to help a couple of families with to to connect them to the rec department program. And then with our summer programming, we often will have students, so because it finishes at noon, they can then go to the rec program for the afternoon, which is much more social and a lot more outdoor time. So where that's possible and available, we partner with them kind of to fill that need, I would say. Does that answer your question?
And yeah, you know, and then, you know, just to dive a little bit deeper, you know, have there been any conversations with Winnicott with regards to any of those eighth grade students who may need more support from friendly faces that they recognize as a transition up to the high school? You know, thinking about, I know a number of eighth graders who maybe have been remote longer than some of the younger kids who might need extra support. And I just would would underline the fact that there are probably more students that we think need support, more students that need support than we think. And so just wondering if we could, you know, emphasize that with classroom teachers that if students need something that we have a chance right now to to make a plan for them.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to that, Brian. They haven't, Winnicott hasn't presented their CARES summer planning yet. But those are all on the table. Not only do are we talking about potential co-teaching models during that summer? But also we're bolstering up the CED, the traditional CED Summit and Fresh Start that we normally run. The other thing they've got going is you might be familiar with Winnicott University. It's kind of a teacher driven instructional model. But the idea would be in the summer that teachers could propose teaching, you know, a mini course on whatever excites them or they're passionate about. And then students can enroll in something, maybe not even not non academic that they'd be able to to share that interest in, just to bring people together. And as you said, create that kind of campy atmosphere. I don't want to get too far ahead of where Winnicott is, but that those are some of the things that are on the table.
And Brian, we do have some students from our North Hampton Middle School that have offered to be a part of that program so that our students will have a familiar face.
Awesome. I guess the last, the last piece that I would say is how can we make sure we get the word out to parents so that if they have concerns about their own students at home, and they may be seeing things that you know, that we may not be aware of. So the more we can involve parents and teachers in those conversations to to support any student. I definitely would support that. So thank you.
Thanks.
Good conversation. Important. Thank you, Brian. Any others? Alright, now, Matt.
Thank you. So we have included the year to date fiscal expenditure and revenue reports. As you are all aware, the fiscal year ends on June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. So we are nearing the the end of the fiscal year. We are, we are tracking, you know, fairly well for year end. As you're aware, we did have, we do have many COVID related expenditures that are not normal. This includes some long term substitutes are in our facilities budgets, we've gone over and equipments, you know, for the tents, various cleaning supplies, disinfecting PPE. Additionally, you know, even even line items such as heating fuels are higher because we've, you know, we've the manner in which we, you know, open windows, we've increased air intake for HVAC system. So we're refreshing that ventilation more often. And all of those items do do cost money. That being said, we do anticipate ending the year with with a balance. We did receive some additional revenue, as I've mentioned in previous months. You know, some, some, some small SIR funds. The the supplemental on public school funding from the state. Additionally, we will be receiving some compensatory services, funds to help supplement some of the special education costs. You should put in on that application and that that was approved and that's a fairly significant amount. You know, close to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So we are, we are in good shape for for year end. It is, it is tighter than normal, but we we should, we should finish the year with with a balance. I I will also note in regard to summer programming, Winnicott did will be receiving you know, close to one point five million dollars through SIR. And I do know that there is a significant focus on utilizing much of those or a portion of those funds for that summer transition. You know, both from eighth grade or for students that may need you know, help as far as learning loss or social emotional learning at at the other grade levels. So I'd be happy to answer any additional questions in regard to the two finance reports.
Any questions for Matt? Matt, I just have one quick comment. So clearly, this last year was tricky for students, teachers, parents, right? I'm trying to figure out how to come back to school. When it was right time to come back to school and make sure that everybody was safe. Obviously, it was tricky from a minute administration and a finance perspective as well. So your ability to kind of find ways to make sure that the revenue was there to take care of the additional expenses and to negotiate better rates for the additional expenses and, you know, find the resources is greatly appreciated. And thanks for doing the work you do.
Well, thank you, Tom. But I mean, a lot of the credit goes to Susan and Becca, Ayesha, and the team at the building level. They they do a great job making my life easier.
Good. That's a good team. Alright. Thank you. So now we're going to new business. The first thing on new business is the withdrawal from the Building Maintenance Expendable Trust that we opened the meeting with. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to withdraw twenty seven thousand one hundred fifty seven from the maintenance budget for expendable trust fund for integration repairs and home and security and safety system upgrades to include security camera system, repeater system for two way radios facing in musical instrument storage shelves.
Thank you, Namina. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote?
Martin Tavishin?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Pam Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
Danielle Strater?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote and noted.
Thank you. Next, we have the awarding of bids. The first one is SMARTboards. Matt, you want to talk a little about the SMARTboard bidding process?
Certainly. So on the bid process did conclude for the proposed SMARTboard purchase. Bids were sent to five vendors and three submitted bids. The administration is recommending a word bid to CCS in the amount of twenty three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. I will also note that funding for this purchase has been budgeted from the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two operating budget.
Mick, can you talk a little bit more about CCS? Is their product superior to Clary and Oakers?
Yeah, so 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 this is a SMARTboard purchase. However, there are competitors, similar products to us, to the SMARTboard that we were looking for, similar to a computer like an Apple versus a Dell. We we specifically in our specifications, we 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 had a specific SMARTboard that we're looking to implement in the school. And the the two bidders, Oakers and Clay Business Machines bid on a different a different device. So those two were disqualified.
Gotcha. So gotcha. So and when we're, we already have SMARTboards in the school, it's part of our technology kind of planning and we're looking to add these in, make sure that we have consistency from classroom to classroom with the the devices. Got it?
That's right. And this is a, this is part of a three year purchasing plan. So we we do plan on purchasing five SMARTboards this year and the the next two years as well.
Thank you.
So Matt, are you saying that the first two are not even compatible with CCS?
They're, they're not comparable. So they they aren't the, the product that they bid does not meet the needs that we are looking to achieve. You know, in our classrooms. And we, you know, of course, when we did receive those bids, we did, we did have Dimitri and the team, you know, investigate as to whether they they would be suitable. You know, obviously, at a lower cost, we'd we'd be willing to explore that option, but they they just, they do not offer the same functionality. And there's also a consistency on piece there as far as our our teachers using the same equipment.
You know, that makes sense to me. If they're they're different devices, that makes, that makes a ton of sense. And if CCS delivered a bit on what we asked for and there are specifications, that's, that's perfect. By the way, I didn't see the asterisk that says please don't these two bits were disqualified. So thank you for holding my hand through that. I could have read it, but I didn't see it.
Problem. I'll also note that that these came in under budget. When we got, you know, oftentimes during a competitive bid environment, you'll see advantageous bids. So when we got quotes, they came in higher. But when we put out the RFP, it did come in at a lower price. So we were, we were satisfied with the with this bid, despite the fact that it was the only acceptable one.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just a question. Is five enough? Is five per year enough? You know, one of the questions I have, you know, over the course of the years, you know, is that going to be enough? Are there, how many classrooms do we have that don't have this technology?
So that will, so over the the course of the three years, that will fully equip all of our classrooms.
What is the life? Thanks. Sorry, Brian.
There is a, that so a portion of that actually is replacement. Because we do have a couple that are have reached end of life. So and we, and that will be built into the, or that I mean, our tech plan is a is a three year plan for for obvious reasons, but it will be built in for a replacement cycle long term.
Well, I get to that point. What is the replacement cycle? What's the timeframe? Are they good for two years, five years? What are they good for generally?
I don't know off the top of my head. Becca, do you have any idea?
Don't. I I'm more familiar with with the devices that we buy for for students and for faculty than those that are in the classroom. But we certainly have. We have the ones that are that we're replacing have been in the building for for many years, I would say eight. But Susan, are you familiar with, we haven't, there was the replacement of we are three year site replacement cycle is what we focused on with our tech plan that we sent, that we presented at last month's school board meeting. And so this isn't been on our radar for when we would be replacing these, but it's long term planning, not in three year cycle.
So I I think that typically they're like five to seven years, but they've changed the design significantly. So I'm not sure that that's accurate anymore. What it does do, what the new design does do for us is it eliminates the need for replacement bulbs, which with the original SMARTboards, the replacement bulb piece was really expensive and you had to budget for replacement bulbs. And the new design is is more like a very large screen TV as opposed to the projector. And so so there's a And um, so, so there's a component of it that saves you some money. And the, and just as Matt said, these were well under the bid price. So um, we, you know, I mean, I don't know if we would consider buying more than the five, but that's, the bid is good.
So um, the, whether we consider buying more than the five, we'll have to kind of keep our eye on the budget. Um, as a, I'm not saying, I'm not saying yes or no, but it would be a budget driven from my perspective. Um, one thing I will share with um the rest of the board members, several years ago, maybe five, six, maybe, um, I guess five. When, when I was first going through the budget process, there were big swings from year to year in technology. So we'd have to buy a whole bunch of computers or a whole bunch of whatever. Um, and over time, the administration is, and the S A U have done a great job in kind of developing a tech plan. And that tech plan is really multifaceted because it's not just talking about devices, but there's a plan about how the devices are used and which grades and how they are effective um one to one or in classroom, right? Part, and this is part of it as well, and it's making sure that we don't have big swings in the budgeting process either because we're replacing devices um every year. And um Matt's done a fantastic job in helping the budget committee um understand the importance of not having that elasticity in, in, in our budgeting as well. So I, I would need to go back and look at that tech plan myself to see what the lifecycle is. But those life cycles and expectancies are all laid out for every device. Even, even down to little things like, like making sure that the iPads aren't just protected, but they have clamshells with keyboards so that our, our elementary students are learning how to key, right? So not just protecting the devices, but we're getting that, that additional skill in there. So anyways, I'm, I'm really impressed with the work on the tech plan over the years. And um, that's one of the reasons I made the comment I did about um poetry, right? We had technology and poetry earlier.
I really wondered, especially this year, if that uh budget is, would in any one way uh be affected with all these kids carrying these devices back and forth to school every single day. Um, I see, I see my son bringing his in and I said, hey, you, you, you had a sleeve. Well, he doesn't fit in my backpack sleeve because he has a laptop backpack sleeve. Um, and I'm like.
There's, we're going to invoice you, I said.
I know, I'm worried about that.
There's Apple, Apple care. That's one of the other things that um we made sure that we have the, the right care plans to make sure that we're replacing them and servicing them.
Good.
Yeah, it's a good, good question. But important, I mean, this year, when we were super lucky, I think that we were a little bit ahead of it and that the community made the investment in our school to make sure that our, our students did have the devices so that, you know, every student could kind of participate, right? So, good stuff. Um, so do we have a motion to award the bid with a smart boards?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the bid from CCS for five smart boards.
Amount of twenty three thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Can we have a roll call vote?
Martin Tavishin?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
Danielle Strater?
Yes.
Vote is taken.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to the award um of a bid for interior painting.
Yes, so the bid process is also concluded for the proposed painting projects. Um, bids were sent directly to nine vendors, five attended the walkthrough and five submitted bids. Um, the administration is recommending award a bid to J A M Painting in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and again, the um funding for this project is um from twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two operating budget.
Any questions or comments? Quick one, Matt. Has, has the school or other districts within the S A used, used J A M before?
I do not believe that we have utilized them. Um, however, Stu um did, um, did speak to them. Did um call references and he's comfortable with them as a company.
Great. If Stu did that background work, then I'm good too. Right, thank you. Any other questions, questions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the bid from J A M for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for painting.
Do we have a second? Conversation, roll call vote.
Martin Tavishin?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yep.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
Danielle Strater?
Yes.
Vote is taken.
All right, next we have federal grant general assurances. So.
Yes, so um as part of our, the receipt of um federal grant funding, um, we are, um, we are required to um provide general assurances, which are um that, that need to be, um, you know, delivered to the school board. And then the superintendent and the board chair is required to sign off on those assurances. Um, so this is that notification and they are attached for your reference. And we will have um Dr. Ericallian and Mr. Von Jess um sign off on those via DocuSign.
That's my question, DocuSign. I, I will be happy to do it and I will read it first. Um, next policies, we have a series of policies to go through first read. Nermina, if I recall, are you on the policy committee? Would you like to make any comments on the first read?
Enjoy the reads.
So, so you'd met um with the S A U, these are the first reads, we need to go through these, read them. And then um we'll come back for uh to approve them at the next meeting.
That's actually the. Probably wouldn't be much new to say you, uh, they really weren't that many changes, little additions here and there. But uh to the new board members, they might be.
So I believe, just so the folks know, um, it will likely come up at the joint school board meeting on May twenty fifth. Um, if this follows past precedent, that these will be voted on there. So if you um can take a look at them prior to the twenty fifth of May, that would be great. All right. Thank you, Nermina, for your work. And then a quick conversation, I just want to have a conversation um with everybody about um the potential for in person uh board meetings. So listen, we're, we're still um under the state of emergency. We still can meet remotely. We have those um abilities. Uh, I know that some school board meetings, some school boards have been coming back to meet in person. Um, I know that I've been asked um if, if we were interested in doing it as well. So I wanted to open it up to um, to everybody. With that, I wanted to share a couple quick comments. In my opinion, as long as we're still under the state of emergency, if we have the flexibility for S A U staff to come in remotely, especially considering the number of meetings that you participate in, even if we're meeting in person, I would be okay with that. I think we should have that conversation. The second thing is, I think we need to speak with um Susan, uh, you and your team about space to make sure that there's adequate space in the school. Um, and maybe even talk to um John Savastano to see what our options are. Um, you know, maybe it should be if, if we are meeting in person, maybe it should be at the town hall, maybe it should be at when it kind of, um, I don't know. Um, but I'm not looking to kind of try to crowd people and or have people feel uncomfortable. But, but if people do want to meet face to face, I want to, I want to honor that as well. So those are some initial thoughts. So I'll open it up for um uh, kind of uh comments or thoughts about whether this group would like to try to find a path forward for face to face board meetings.
I would like to make that, I would like to see that happen. Um, we did it that once at Winnicott and, and um it was nice. People don't show to this like they wouldn't show to those most likely. Um, but the space was always an issue. So if we have the available space, um, I think it'd be nice.
Okay, great. Thank you, Nermina. Any other thoughts or comments?
Sorry, Danielle.
That's okay.
I, I, I agree. If we can find the space, that'd be good to do it in person.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with the in person. And then I um appreciate your comment, acknowledge the amount of meetings some of the administrators are attending to have that kind of hybrid option if needed. And then also it'll give um the public the option to be in person or hybrid as well. So it's just giving everyone options and letting them make decisions that suit them the best. Yeah, I agree.
So, um, how about from um the, the rest of the team or the administration, any, any thoughts or comments? This is.
So I, I can maybe speak a little bit to the um, to the space piece. So we typically meet in um the chorus room, which is where the equipment is to be able to broadcast. And that equipment appears to be stationary. So if we were going to, I think we, we have space to meet in person. So like we could set up the gym. We could set up some other spaces that are larger that would accommodate, um, you know, attendees and board members and administrators. But I'm not sure we have the ability to meet the um requirements of the broadcast piece. So it may make sense to look into town hall or talk to, talk to John or look at Winnicott for, because of that reason.
So I can tell you that, um, so Winnicott's been meeting uh in person twice and Hampton Falls. So those are the two boards who have been in person since last November. And both boards have met at the Winnicott Lecture Hall. Uh, it, we felt it was a nice compromise uh from the auditorium where, you know, you have to spread out on the stage and it's really difficult to kind of see people down from a really long table, plus the spotlights are on you. Um, so the lecture hall has been um pretty nice for that because we can six foot distance the, the board in the front um while allowing for space for the public in the, in the audience, in the table, at the tables. The lecture hall also has the capacity to live stream. So while it's not a Zoom, it's not an interactive Zoom like this. Um, it is live streaming on the Winnicott YouTube channel in real time. So, you know, to Susan's point, if it, if you were to hold your meeting um in the gym, you know, where, where there's no live streaming, perhaps you're recording, recording it with an iPad on a tripod or something like that. You would need to have access and space for the public to come in and, and view it in person in real time. So there has to be a real time option. And so we found that the Winnicott Lecture Hall is, is the best of both worlds there. I mean, of course, it's a trade off because it's not in your town. Um, but that is set up there for, for in person and live streaming simultaneously. So that's an option that has been successful for other boards.
Thank you. So, so if, if you all are, are okay, um, I will contact John Savastana to find out what um our options are and we'll, we'll look at the, the difference between um the town hall, if there was, if there, we could do it in the cafeteria or gym. I'm not saying to Susan that we can, but if we could, um, and then the lecture hall as well. Just to make sure that he and his team are on board. He might even be watching right now. John, I want to give you a call. Or he'll, when he downloads it, he'll see that we're talking about him. Um, so we'll take, I'll take that as an action item and then uh I'll loop back with um, with everybody well before the next meeting. So we have time to plan, okay?
So I know at the beginning of this, that the school was kind of more off limits for the reasons of not wanting to people, other people to come in. Does that still stand um that we don't want people coming to school, to the gym, to cafeteria?
It is true that we still have technically no visitors across the S A U in buildings. You know, unless there are exceptions for I U P meetings or certain things that we have to hold. Um, but, but that's certainly a decision point because, you know, we learn more now about COVID nineteen and surfaces um and ventilation. So I think that's something that the board could consider and that's something that could be different now versus in the fall.
So if the Winnicott opened its doors to its school board members and what was the other school you mentioned? Hampton Falls, do they do it at Hampton Falls School or do they go to Winnicott?
They both are in the, were, have been in the Winnicott Lecture Hall. So they allowed that. I mean, a big piece is that it's after hours. There are no students there. I mean, there are evening schools there, but it's a very tiny group of kids. So um, that's a big piece. You know, you're not passing students in the hallways. Um, so, and so they are, they are opening their doors in the evenings to, to different events, to some parents um for, for the musical, for example. So that is opening up.
So there you go.
Question though.
And that's a great question. It's a great point.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll, I'll talk to John. I'll come back with uh, with options and we'll figure out what we do um for uh, you know, for, for June. As we move forward. Uh, so we're going to go into non-public in, in a moment. Um, but just for the audience, um, our next meeting dates, S A U has an operation committee meeting on May thirteenth at five thirty. Um, the S U has a joint board meeting where we will do the second read of our policies on May twenty fifth at six P M. Um, now our next North Hampton School Board meeting will be Thursday, June third at six thirty. Um, and more important than all of those, eighth grade graduation is June tenth at six P M. Rain day two four teeth, fourteenth, and that's at the school. Is that right, Susan? All right, it'll be outside. So we're your code. All right. Um, so like to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion to enter the non-public.
This is under RSA ninety one, A three, two, B. Bravo. All right, roll call vote, please.
Martin Tavishin?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
Danielle Strater?
Yes.
Roll call is taken.
I'll resume the recording. We're good. You can go ahead and make that motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the non-public session and resume the public meeting.
Second? I'll second.
Martin Tavishin? Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
Danielle Strater?
Yes.
Vote is taken.
All right. So we have a nomination for a teacher. Someone like to make the nomination, I mean, the motion?
I will be happy to make a motion uh to approve the interest superintendent's nomination of Carl Lee DePietro for the P E teacher position for the twenty one, twenty two school year.
Roll call vote, please.
Martin Tavishin?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
Danielle Strater?
Yes.
Danielle, vote is taken.
Thank you. We are lucky. Um, so that brings us to the um end of the agenda. So we need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a second from Brian. All right.
It, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. Uh, tomorrow, there's a, the, I don't know if this was said before I jumped on because I was late. Remember tomorrow is the last day for Teacher Appreciation Week. So show your love for our hardworking teachers.
Counted a parade. I spent the afternoon decorating car.
There you go. So that's a great way to end the meeting, Brian. Thank you for uh, for reminding us of that. Thank you. All right. Do we have to take a vote or we can just wave?
Everyone just wave.
Wave. Bye, everybody.
Great job, Matt.
Good job, Matt.
Good job, everybody.
Thank you.